Hi, welcome to the second meeting in the meet the commissioners series. We are happy to have Sue and Tessa from Housing Commission, and Ray and Vikram from the Planning Commission here to share their experiences. Remember, the deadline to apply is Friday, January 8th at 4:30 PM.
Very cool. I will pop out for a quick second.
I know.
Yeah, no, no, we do a, we do a weekly podcast and TV show. And so that's what I was doing like before I jumped in here.
What kind of TV show?
It's an enterprise TV show. So, and then this morning I was on, at 4:40 AM, I was on Economic Times Now. So the ET Now broadcast in India. So that was going on at 4:40 this morning and then a whole bunch of stuff. So this, this mic, I bought this right before the pandemic. It's like the, my saving grace. And I don't even know if it's on. Let me double check.
Oh yeah, you sound beautiful.
Oh yeah, yeah, it's on. Yeah, yeah, this one's on. It's not coming from here. So, so yeah.
Sounds great.
Thanks. Yeah. Oh, is this, Liang, what do you want, what do you need us to do?
I think that's have everyone introduce yourself and what background you have and what made you apply to Housing Commission in the first place and then the experience so far. And once we go through the round of introduction, then we will look at the slides that I prepared and on the roles and responsibilities of the Housing Commission. And then maybe we can share some of things that you have discussed in the commissions, okay? So let's start with the, wait, who needs to go by one? I think Ray needs to go by one, right? Both of you, okay? So I try to finish and so let's start with Sue and then Tessa and then Ray and Vikram is not here yet. Let me text him. Okay. Let's start with Sue. Hi, welcome to.
Hi, my name is Sue Vos and I'm the Chair of the Housing Commission for the year of our Lord 2020. It's coming to a close. I have been on the Housing Commission for five years and two of those years I was Chair of the Housing Commission. The reason I applied to the Housing Commission is because housing is extremely close to my heart. I am a Realtor by profession, have been doing that for 17 years. And my dream is to help little people get into little homes. So basically help provide a shelter to all people. And my forte is first time home buyers. So I really like to help people that may, it's so difficult for them to get a home in the Bay Area. In another job that I did, it's not really a job, I've done a lot of volunteer work. I was the Chair of the Realtor Service Volunteer Program for maybe more than 10 years. And in that position, we helped seniors and disabled people in the cities of Cupertino, Sunnyvale and Santa Clara. And I chaired that program. And we went into their homes and helped them with tasks around their homes that would help protect them so that they didn't have to change light bulbs, didn't have to change the smoke detector battery because that they can get hurt, they can fall down and get hurt very easily. So it's helpful, helping this protect the seniors and disabled people to be able to live in their own homes for longer and not have to go into a care facility. So these are some of the reasons why I chose the Housing Commission. And actually someone proposed my name and asked me to come and give my time to the Housing Commission. And I feel it's a very rewarding space to be at. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Liang.
Great. So Tessa.
Hi, my name's Tessa Parish. Thank you Vice Mayor Tao for the opportunity to share my experience. I am very new. I am, was appointed as of this year. So I can give you the newbie experience. I'm also a Realtor. I guess real estate comes hand in hand with the commission. But I, low income housing is very important. And of course, there's a bigger and bigger need for the city of Cupertino. So I thought it would be a good use of my, you know, my energies to put towards the city to do that. I also volunteered in a community, in a community center for planning for, for parents and I've seen them struggle. But more than that, for me, it has been, it's setting a good example to the community that anybody can, can become a commissioner and that you don't need special skills unless you're in a specifically specialized commission that anybody could be. So even if you just mention it to someone, they go, oh, what is that about? And you can set a good example and say, hey, you should become a commissioner. Anybody can do it. And I'm trying to promote more civic engagement. I think that it starts here, government starts here. And what happens and the more eyes we have on the community, more resources we have, we are all resource rich. And I think that together we can do a lot more. So that's why I joined. I've been a Realtor for 29 years. And yeah, this, this gives me a good opportunity to give back to the community.
Well, that's great. So Ray.
So yeah, so I joined the Planning Commission. Actually, I was interested in only because I've been watching a lot of different development issues that's been happening in the city. And like all the other commissioners here, I mean, there's a sense of community. And I think that's really what drives you to join the commission because you feel that, you know, there's, you might have time, you might want to give back, there's something you want to do, there's a perspective. And what's really hard is, is, you know, traditionally, a lot of these commissions, you know, you, you don't understand the city until you actually see it from different angles. One, you know, as a citizen, as a resident, one being on the commission, one in other capacities, you know, in terms of how people interact. And so the Planning Commission to me has been very exciting because there are a lot of things that are happening, right? Everything from trying to address issues around housing, trying to think about, you know, what, you know, how much or how little regulation is needed, especially trying to figure out, you know, how, how do people can actually, you know, achieve their goals, right? You've bought a home, you want to build something, you want to extend it, like what can you do to make it easier for folks? If you, you know, potentially have a business, you want to, you know, try something new or do something different, you know, what can you do to get there? And I think that's what makes it exciting. You know, the ability to, you know, see what rules are in place, to really plan, you know, a couple of years out, five years out in some case, 10 years out to think about what potential needs are. And also to protect residents as well, to, you know, when it comes to health or safety or environment, right? Or when it comes to, you know, might be large interest abusing the system, you know, what, what can you do to protect, you know, residents, you know, before things happen? Because a lot of times, I mean, if you think about our makeup of our community, I mean, we've got a lot of people where you've got, you know, two or three income families that are so busy or people trying to get their kids just, you know, out of here or people who are, you know, pursuing other, you know, doing other types of pursuits. They're too busy to understand exactly what's happening in the city. And as commissioners, part of our job is to actually be informed, share that information. And, you know, in some cases, get the populace rallied around certain issues so that, you know, their interests are being protected as well. So, so it's been very exciting being here. I'm a half term, part term commissioner. So my commission ends January 31st. And maybe I'll reapply. No, I'm kidding. I probably will reply. It's, it's fun. So, so I'll definitely do it. It is a lot of work. So it's a lot of reading, a lot of preparation on the Planning Commission. You definitely, if you're camera shy, probably, you know, you might want to try another commission first because you are on camera all the time, which, which makes it a little bit more interesting. But you do get to sit in the dais, which is, it's quite a humbling experience. You know, because you realize like what you have to do and the responsibilities that are in front of you. So, but thanks for having here, Liang, and happy to answer any questions from people as well.
Wow. So nice. You guys make it sound so exciting to join commission. So I hope many people, more people will apply. So this is the second in our series. Generally, the commissions are a four-year term, which ends on January 30th. It's appointed by the city. And the roles of commissioners are to advise the city council. And staffs, usually there will be staff liaison to provide services to help you manage the meeting. But any staff services should be directed by the city council. And then each year, the council will have work programs that will be adopted usually in between March and June, when we are finalizing next year's budget. And the commissions will submit their inputs. And then part of the city council program will become the commission program for the next year. And here is a link to apply. And we have, in this December, we are doing commissions for those that we have vacancies this year. Some of the commissions don't have vacancies this year. So we will have the series be meet commissioners in January. And here are the housing commission. As I mentioned earlier, I have requested this so that each commission now have its own email. So the public can, the public can email the entire commission with, for example, planningcommission@cupidino.org or housingcommission@cupidino.org. And right now, I find, I requested to have the work program posted on the commission website. So the public can easily find out what the commissions are working on each year. However, it's a bit inconsistent. For some work program is posted, for some it's not. And I find for both planning and housing commissions, your work program is not posted. So I will try, I will request for those. And the public can also find out your roles and meeting times from your homepage. So Housing, so Planning Commission meets on Tuesday. Usually it's a date that when we don't have council meetings, that second and fourth Tuesday. And we have five members. I think there are all five members need to be Cupertino residents. Okay. Yeah, so this is a responsibility that's listed on the city website. And it's a short description. And to see the detailed roles, you need to go to the municipal code, which I have copied here. And Planning Commission actually has a lot of responsibility in advising the council on housing policies and should be actively reviewing general plan that defines the whole structure of our city. Oh, Vikram, welcome. So why don't we go to Vikram? And you can do an introduction of your background, what you have done before, what brought you to the Planning Commission, okay?
Hello, hi.
And your experience so far, what you have learned, yeah?
I hope you can see me, but for some reason, my headphone was not pairing with my, my laptop. So I'm going to go without, hope you can all see, hear me and see me.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Liang, for organizing this meeting and for getting us a chance to talk to all the folks who are interested in serving on the Planning Commission. I also see Ray is there. Hi, Ray. So I have been living in Cupertino since 2009. We have two children, one is in Montomito High School and one is in Lincoln, the both boys. So before getting actively involved in Cupertino city affairs, I have had a pretty interesting but varied career. I'm an engineer like many of us. I have worked in a few of tech companies. I have also worked on Wall Street and on mortgages and CDOs and complex such instruments. And I think I started getting a lot more interested in the city and planning issues when I joined Uber after an acquire of a company I was leading the engineering team from. So that's where I worked a lot on maps. So I started studying maps and routing and traffic. And sometimes the traffic around Cupertino would really surprise me. And also how I started getting a sense of how and why you have jams and when you don't have jams. That was very useful. Since 2018, I've been at Facebook where I try to keep the platform safer and to have social impact via the platform. So I was quite busy with handling the elections for Facebook in some capacity till quite recently. I got involved in the city affairs of 2016, when we had the Measure C. That's when I started trying to understand how a city works, you know, what are the rules and regulations, who makes those decisions? And I think the biggest opening, the biggest discovery for me was Cupertino schools, that how crowded they were in terms of their own like planned capacity versus what they have. The fact that, you know, one day my middle schooler at that time came and told me that, you know, in Kennedy, it was a, not Kennedy, but Kennedy Middle East. In Kennedy, if you have a lockdown, they can't secure the portables. And he has gone through a lockdown while he was attending Stevens Creek, where there was this sad incident in the cement factory and then a shooting and then the entire school was locked down. So he has gone through a lockdown before and he realized that Kennedy cannot be really secured because a lot of the trusses are held in portables, which are essentially spread all over the ground and are not inside a building. So that also got me wondering and trying to investigate about how school funding works, how were different elements contribute to it? And what stood out to me is the intricacies of California law in terms of how everything works. It's not that we pay a tax and everything happens. So much of it happens based on state level directives. The money we go gets pooled into central things. And that also means that every city needs to have a strategy which would work with what the state operates. It's like the state has created this massively complex systems of entitlements and commitments and responsibilities. And if you don't plan accordingly, you're going to end up in that state where we have among the lowest funding for schools in the entire country, which is shocking since we have one of the highest cost of livings in the entire country. So, so those are the things that got me interested. And I felt that instead of just complaining about it outside, why not go inside and actually start fixing the system? So that's what got me here. The planning deficit which the city saw, which led to the state of the schools, which probably are one of the, one of the biggest things people come to Cupertino for. So the fact that what was our crowning glory in some way was so underfunded and the planning deficit, as I call it, which led to that, said that, okay, let me jump in and try to help the situation rather than just worry and complain about it.
Great. Wow. Very interesting background. So anyone has more things to add about your own background or your inspiration to apply? Okay, then let's get back to the slides.
Sure then, I'll add to that if you want.
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I, I think for me, it's like, I've probably been advocating a lot of pro-resident issues. It doesn't even matter where I've been or what city is. And it's, it's been interesting to see the dynamic between residents, the city, the city staff, developers, lobbyists in that equation. And in many cases, I've just been on the other end as a citizen, just helping someone else out. And what I realized is in, in these scenarios, we have been outclassed, outgunned, like outmaneuvered, you know, because the really, really active and involved and smart people that are out there in the community don't have time to be on a commission. So, and having, you know, my own business actually gave me a little bit more freedom to actually be able to join a commission. And I think that helped a bit. It shouldn't have been an excuse. I probably should have joined earlier. So for those of you out there that are interested in being on a commission, like it is, it is very important for us to take some of the people with the history of the neighborhood, the history of the community, people who are really good at crunching different types of data, people really good at communicating, people who just have a passion for, you know, aesthetics, especially on a planning commission. I think it's so important for people to join. And a lot of times, it just becomes a fact of time. So the time around, I just said, fine, you know, instead of being on the other end, I'm just going to jump in and, and, you know, commit some time to, to be on the commission. Along with some of the things that, I mean, working with a lot of different types of issues over the past five years, I realized we have a really wonderful community. And, and not for a corporate interest.
Your audio is breaking up for me. I don't know if it's my internet or is it?
Sorry about that. Is that any better?
Yeah.
That's probably me. Is that any better? Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so it's just that love for the city that everybody has. And I think that's so important. And, and with so many smart people here and so many people that are able to contribute, I think it's important for everybody to jump in. And if you've got a chance and time to do the commission, do it. I just figured that I'll devote the time and, and, and make it work. So.
Yeah. Thank you all for serving on the commissions. Actually, when I first got elected in late 2018 and early 2019, I found out Planning Commission canceled the health of its meetings in 2018. And then I found out Housing Commission doesn't do much except, except some staff presentation. And, but the two of, both of your commissions are maybe the most important ones right now. And then I looked at the municipal code. And so I'm sharing the screen now. You can see that the Planning Commission roles and the responsibility actually is long and they are very important. So I've been trying to, so that, to advocate for the commissioners to be in more control of what you could contribute because we have five talented people on each commission. Why don't we take advantage of them to help the council to figure out more how we can deal with the housing and planning issues? So here.
That's a great point, Liang. We've gone from being very passive to being a little bit more active. And I think that's what, what happened over the years is the commissions have become a lot more passive instead of active. And, and that's starting to change with the new city councils. So.
Yeah. And yes, we need to be conscious that we don't use extra staff time without council, the majority of council to direct on a project. But I've been trying to advocate to allow the commissioners the freedom to explore issues that they are interested in on their own, on their own commission meeting, as long as they don't use extra staff time. So I'm hoping you could be, as long as you are doing something that's within the purview of your powers and responsibilities, I think you should have the freedom to explore different policies and talk to the different agencies to find out how best we can do planning and housing. And so next to them, let's look at the Housing Commission. And again, this slide will has the email for Housing Commission. And, oh, the current work program also is not listed right now. So Housing Commission meets second Thursday each month at nine. Even though the municipal code actually only require it to meet once quarterly. So you guys are meeting more often, which is good. And one of the representatives would be from Cupertino Business. There is no residency requirement. The other four has, needs to be Cupertino residents. And I find, and for Housing Commission specifically, there are more requirements that we would like to involve commissioners who have a specific need, especially those who are, will be served, need to be served by affordable housing and who might be receiving grant, who might be seniors, homeless, single parent, families of low income, renters, disabled or first time home buyers. So in fact, we hope the housing commissioners could include the people from the population who actually the Housing Commission intends to serve. And here are the roles and responsibilities from the municipal code. As you can see, also for Housing Commission, it's long, two pages. And you are supposed to advise on housing policies, recommend policies on implementation and monitoring of affordable housing and facilitate innovative approaches to affordable housing development. So I would encourage your housing commissioners to look at maybe policies other cities have done and, and attend different meetings to find out what innovative approaches are there and bring them to us. And you could also advise on housing proposals. For if we have housing proposals with affordable component, when it exceeds the minimum required or even when it needs waivers or incentives, Housing Commissioners should be involved in reviewing those and make recommendations on the CDP grant, which you usually do. And also you could provide information about affordable housing to the community. And you can meet with neighbors, community, regional business groups to assist in generating affordable housing and help identify sources of funds to develop and build affordable housing. So I would encourage all of you to even host the community meetings on any of these topic and to help educate our community about planning and housing issues. And like I recommended to Library Commission when they tried to do a town hall, because we don't want to take too much staff time. So you could even take one of your regular commission meeting, just make a portion of the meeting as a town hall and open. That means you get to talk about any topic that's within your purview as a housing commission and then provide more Q and A, more interactive style with the public. So you can schedule that as, as, at your regular meeting. So because you can consider that. Or you can schedule a special meeting, then all five member of the permission could attend and plus the public can ask more questions. And you can make presentations, things you would like the public to do, okay? So that's.
Liang?
Yeah.
Quick question. About that, we just can't use staff resources, right? Because that's why you're doing what you're doing now on your email and all that. Because we can't, since it's not on the work program, we can't use staff resources. But we can liaise with them, right?
Um, what do you mean by liaise with them?
You can put it on the website and just let them know, we can inform them and keep them in.
Yes. Yeah. So, um, so we, anything that's not in the work program, we, we should not use staff resources because staff, they have their plate full, it's plate full. And so anything additional, I'd like to do, do like this, this thing. I came up, in, actually, I want to do that in November, in October. Then I thought, I'll wait until election is over. And then in November, then I thought, okay, I have to do it. I kind of have been procrastinating. Then I thought, oh, I have to do it before the, the deadline is up.
I like, I like the engaging.
But then I find out John tried to do the round table. And since it's not on the work program, and he did goes through the, the city staff, but it was taking a long time back and forth and back forth and to schedule and to do the flyer. So I thought, okay, I'll just do it on my own. Then I can get it done and push it out so people can attend in December and in time for the application. So this, the only staff time was to, when I sent out, I didn't even know they advertised for me. So. Anyway, but then for commissioners also, if you want to do a town hall, I think the best way to minimize staff time would be make that as part of your regular meeting. Because staff will post your regular meeting anyway, right? And then you don't need to schedule extra, uh, room or, or right now it's virtual, so it's much easier. Yeah.
Vice Mayor Chow?
And of course, if it's something that you really want to do for next year, you can also make that part of your work program and propose it to the council. If it's more approved, then you can do it as a work program item for next year to have community come home, come home, for example.
If it's not on the agenda, Carrie won't do it, I'm sure. Um, but we can add it, we can, we can.
You can request to do it for next year, then for sure it, yeah, the council, with council direction, then you can use staff time for town hall. Yeah.
Okay.
If I may suggest something, if we, if we want to discuss staff time, maybe once the recording is done, we can then discuss that. Because I think this is being recorded for the public.
Yeah. So if you want, yeah, I know you need to leave at one, so feel free to.
No, my, my concern is if we want to talk about our staff time, we can talk about it after the recording is done. Because this, from what I understand, is more like a promo to, uh, recruit new commissioners from the general public. So we should keep it focused to that topic.
Good point.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay. Yeah. So, and let's see if we have any, uh, any member of the public who has questions for the commissioners.
You have Peggy Griffin?
I think we have, I didn't look at the chat.
Peggy Griffin says, questions to all commissioners. How much time does serving take?
Uh huh. Yeah.
So we have to answer that question.
Yeah.
I can answer it on behalf of the housing commission. Um, we typically meet once a month, uh, the second Thursday in the morning at nine AM. And typically our meetings run from nine to maybe max eleven, but sometimes if our agenda is very packed, then it may go over to twelve and it's gone as late as one PM. But, uh, other than that, we do, uh, liaison with the staff over the month. And, uh, there might be, uh, special subcommittees that may take up a little bit more time. But, uh, and then also we do all our reading and all our research on our own time. So that's about all the time it takes. I think that answers it for the housing commission. I don't know if the planning commission wants to add.
So it, it means it's like, uh, five hours a month, ten hours a month?
Yeah, I'd say no more than ten hours a month.
Because you have monthly meetings, right? So Tessa, how, what did you think?
So as a new prescrip-, I, I can add to the, the new, um, new commissioner perspective there. Um, at, at first you're becoming familiar with the, the general plan, what the work program is and all that. And you look at the agenda and you try to become informed on what it is that we're going to talk about. So, but it's still, it's never taken me really more than, okay, on the hefty ones, it's taken me a couple of hours. And, and the city carries there, the staff is very good at supporting by any questions, I call them, email them, they respond right away. And they can, you know, they can give you answers that you have questions on. Then the day of the meeting, it's, it's expedited, it's quickly. So in prep, the preparation I'd say is about an hour before the meeting, depending on the meeting and then the meeting itself. So it doesn't take a whole lot of time. Then if, as a commissioner, if you have something else that you want to look into, then you're doing your own research and you can take it to Carrie or, uh, your liaison and suggest it to them and see if they want to bring it up to the meeting or bring it up at the meeting at the next time.
Great. So how about planning commission?
Okay, so.
You have two meetings a month, right?
Yeah. So, uh, the planning commission, it meets twice a month. Most of the time the meetings happen on, once in a while, there's nothing on the agenda, so they don't happen. Um, I would say out of the twenty-four scheduled meetings, we have around eighteen to twenty is what I would say we have them. Each meeting by itself lasts at least two hours, but I've seen those which have gone for five or six hours also. Right? Um, so, uh, so that's the time required in the meeting. Uh, prior to the meeting, there is prep time in terms of reading what is being coming on the agenda and, uh, getting more questions or answers about that. And that can vary anything from an hour to four, five hours, depending on how intense or deep the topic is. Um, now the other aspect is this, that, uh, the, to the Brown Act, you can't really talk to the commissioners of behind the scenes. You can as much, as much talk, do is only maybe talk to one more commissioner. Because if you have three, then it has to be a public record and a public hearing. So that also means that you, uh, if you have questions or if you have thought or thinking more strategy, well, our discussion actually happens on the panel because it's not that you have, already have a consensus on anything. And that means that many times you will have to put forward your arguments, think about things and so on, on the commission. Uh, and since the topics we cover are fairly varied, that can sometimes take time and also require some preparation. Outside of that, I think the official work, uh, I've had to meet, um, uh, maybe developers and their representatives maybe two times a year. So I would typically meet them, uh, and they're typically a very open, once I had met them at work, I, uh, they join, join me at Facebook office because that's where the best time to convene for me. Uh, typically, uh, I meet them after hours in the, uh, within the city. Uh, sometimes depending on the nature of the topic, I actually do a drive-by to see what that area looks like. Uh, or sometimes I just thank Google and do a street view Google drive-by. Uh, so it depends on, on the nature of the problem and the nature of the topic. So, uh, that also, uh, takes some time. Um, we have a planning commissioners academy, um, which is like, it's like a, it's an academy where there's a planning academy and they have a program which they run every March, which is a two-day training program for commissioners academy. Um, unfortunately, I've not been able to attend to it, uh, uh, which in real life because of COVID, I was thinking of going this time. But a lot of the material is present online, so you can do that. Um, so I would say, uh, so on the whole, I would say about three to five hours a week is what it would take, uh, if I sum everything up across everything and there are ups and downs about it.
Okay. Ray?
Uh, what he said, I'm good. No, I'm kidding. So, so, so yeah, Vikram's got a very good description of, of what happens in the planning commission. And I would say it really depends how active you want to be or how inactive, uh, you want to be. And I, I think we've had a pretty active planning commission, like, uh, I mean, we, I definitely do site visits like Vikram does as well. I mean, I'll go, I'll, I'll do site visits. Sometimes I'll meet some of the people if there's a dispute. We had a dispute, uh, I don't know, earlier in the year, actually last year, um, where people were trying to build an addition and, you know, neighbors were getting involved and kind of stuff. And it's good to get the viewpoint, right, to physically stand there and see what the heck was going on and why people felt the ways that they did. And then also take a, you know, the Google street view to really see what was going on in everybody else's neighborhood, like, or, or in terms of their backyards. So, so you can get really involved and engaged. And, and I think the good news is that it's, it's fairly defined, right? You read the Cupertino municipal code in the section that is related to your commission and you find a lot of interesting things. Um, I, not like I read this for fun, but I actually have looked at it, uh, quite deeply. You find some rules and you say, why is that here, right? And, and it's interesting to understand the history, right? Was it, was it just a period of time? Was it, you know, something that, you know, people were thinking like ten steps ahead, right? So it makes you think about things that way in terms of the policy. Uh, but I would say like, yeah, you know, planning commission is, is a little bit more involved. Uh, you definitely, two hours is being generous Vikram. We've, we've had meetings that have gone later, but it's true. We've had shorter meetings as well. Um, so, but, and, you know, sometimes there's a lot to read, right? There's diagrams, there's schematics, there's blueprints, right? Sometimes you have to research laws that people just threw at you. Last week we had a hundred seventy-seven page document to read, right? And I was like, whoa. I mean, and, and, and so I learned, learned a lot about, you know, the different types of approaches. So, so, but each of these commissions are different and, and there's different aspects. Like the one that I probably should have joined is Parks and Rec, right? That's fun, right? There's all this cool stuff, but it's also a lot of work, right? People are trying to make sure that, you know, kids have access, programs are there, funding is in place, right? So, so each of these commissions has a special role, uh, to play. Um, and yeah, and back to planning commission, I would say that, yeah, it's, it's probably one of the bigger time commitments. So, so think about that as well if you do join, you know, we, we'd love to have you. And, and more importantly, if you, if you are joining, make sure, you know, you, you allocate some time, right? Two, I'd say two to three hours for a meeting and then think about about an hour or two of prep work, depending on what it is. And if it gets a little more complicated, find a buddy. Uh, you know, I think Vikram, uh, you're still there next year. So Vikram, if they appoint me, I'll, I'll be there and, uh, you know, we're happy to be your buddy as, as we, you know, help each other out as, as people are, you know, coming in. So we have a little buddy system and we can only have one buddy. Otherwise we break Brown Act, allow us back to what Vikram was saying. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I think one thing I would mention that the ambit of the planning commission and the kind of things we talk about is very, very broad. It covers legal aspect, it covers social aspects, it covers aesthetic aspects. And to expect that anybody or anybody who comes from the commission is going to be an expert on all those topics is probably not true. So there is some on-the-job learning involved because the scope of what we do is really broad. Uh, but as a person who sort of enjoys learning about new things, it's always very, that's one of the parts of the job, which I really love to learn about new things. And sometimes you discover very surprising facts. So we were talking about, uh, the library expansion and our budget for that was nineteen hundred dollars per square foot. So that's about eight times what it would cost to build a house, uh, or, or, or something similar. And just understanding where and how the money goes, why is it so different from anything, the small remodeling and anything you would have done? Um, and probably, I, thinking in a more philosophical level, it actually forced me to think that maybe there is a bigger scope for optimization in how the state spends its money also. Uh, because I'm sure, uh, the people who are doing it are doing it to the best of their ability. But just the system is probably set up in a manner where just everything costs more. Uh, like I have family in the healthcare business and I know that every piece of thing which is, and maybe Ray can tell us more, is that if you buy a, an extension card which is meant for medical purposes, it costs like ten times the stuff you can pick from home before. And maybe there's something like that also going wrong in the state. But those are the kind of things which actually make the job very interesting. So if you are about, if you're curious, if you want to learn about new things, if you want to work at the intersection of many, many different aspects of, of, of society, it's a great place to be. It's never a boring day.
Great. So there is a second part of the question, I think you guys mentioned, uh, prep time, outside visits and meeting with the public. So one thing that I've tried to do, but not very consistent is when there is invitation to, um, like different events, uh, especially city events, I told the city manager that we should invite the commissioners to, to attend because, so that they, they have chances to, um, engage with the public. But I, it hasn't been done consistently. So if you think that's something good to, I think some of you, for example, participate in the volunteer fair, right? You have a table there to inform the public what your commissioner does. So if there are other city events that you think commissioners can, should attend and have more engagement with the public, let us know. And I guess adding a table should not be too much time. Um, yeah. So and anything, anyone has anything to add or do I have any more questions from the public? You can raise your hand. Actually, you, you can unmute yourself. We have six minutes. So you, you're welcome to, okay, Leanna. Just unmute yourself.
Hi, hi, sorry. I, just two things. One, I see that Peggy has a follow-up question. So I hope that you have a chance to, to get to that. My comment is very quick, um, before, before Peggy can jump in. And that is that in terms of public engagement, I just want to let folks know that we were alerted on the library commission that those folks who are interested in learning about the, um, library expansion, plans for the library expansion, we're going to, uh, that will be discussed at the first meeting in January. That's the first Wednesday in January at seven PM. So for those who'd like to, um, w- we actually have it as part of our, um, work plan this year to promote community engagement, especially because we have this brand, brand new, uh, planning stage for a library expansion. And we're trying to, uh, just as, um, as Vice Mayor Chow has, has asserted, we're trying to do this within the confines of our already planned meetings as to not burden staff too much. But it is a, um, a great opportunity to come and learn about that. And, and these are, I really feel like this is one advantage that we have with being remote, that more people can participate in these meetings and learn about what's going on in their community. Thank you. And then Peggy, thanks.
Yeah, actually, reading the roles of library commission, I find out, uh, even architectural plan and of libraries should be part of the library commission's role. But the city in the past did not involve library commission, even in the library expansion project. So it should have been one of your work program items, but I don't think it is to, to work and the review, the library expansion plan.
Yes, I, I do, we do have two, um, members of the commission who are serving on the subcommittee, uh, specifically as liaisons for the expansion plan. And it has been a kind of a push and pull, which I, I believe is probably normal. Um, I do feel that, um, we, you know, we keep bringing back certain points that the commission feels strongly about. And I think we are getting a, a, uh, better response, better response, I'd say each year um, in terms of more engagement and, um, kind of an understanding with staff. So I, I do feel that I've served for four years that that has improved and I think it's just only going to continue to improve.
Yeah. And it's, I, I find the municipal code, the, the responsibilities there are pretty good, comprehensive. And so we can, um, check those. And right now I know that two library commissioners are involved in the subcommittee for library expansion as stakeholders. And but you are like one of the stakeholders as any other. But in fact, library commission should be taking the major role and even host public hearings about library expansion project according to the municipal code. So that's something, maybe I think even city council didn't know if we didn't read the municipal code, we don't always know. So it's good to, um, each year to review that. Yeah. And you can remind us too. So feel free to email the entire council, um, to give us update or even if you would like, um, clarification on your roles, um, email us. Um, so, so we understand what's going on. Yeah.
Vice Mayor Chow, if I may read Peggy Griffin's comment. She is asking the planning commission, when do you get the material? Do you have opportunity to ask staff questions before the meeting? So that's to the planning commission.
Yeah, it's a great point, quite questioned. Uh, we get materials the same time the public does. Uh, so when the agenda is posted on Thursday, uh, that's when we get all the materials. So it's, um, it's a, it's a lot of reading to do sometimes over a weekend. Uh, and then you can always ask staff a question. You can ask them and send them an email if you need clarification. So that part is pretty standard.
Yeah, and the staff in general, very responsive and very helpful. They are a great ally we have in our work. Uh, I've had them call me at times just to answer a question. Uh, and many times we also get comments from the public on those topics, uh, sent to us via email before the meeting. So by the time the minute comes out and by the time the meeting happens, there's a lot of email traffic, it is. Where people also submit their comments or their thoughts or follow-up questions to us.
Actually, that's the same for city council too. We don't get the material until Wednesday night when the public gets it. So.
I'll read fast.
Yeah. But then I, for, for us at least, and, uh, if you subscribe to the bi-weekly newsletter from the city manager, it's called Items of Interest. At the end, there is a list of future agenda items that's tentatively scheduled for upcoming city council meetings that gives an idea of when things might come. And but of course it's subject to change, but for each commission, um, it's not there. But I find the. But I find the Parks and Rec Commission has a pretty good, uh, they, in each, uh I don't know if they still do it, last year when I looked at their agenda, in each commission agenda, they include their work program. So that every, every time they kind of review their work program. And at the very, very end, they also have a list of upcoming agenda items with tentative dates. I thought that's a really good to include in every agenda. Um, to have a view of where we are, what's our goal for this year. Yeah.
I wanted to, if I may, um, it, when you organize this, I thought it was a great idea to promote it. I'm not seeing anything and I think it's, it's really good to change with the times, mostly with the COVID times, to be able to put something virtually where people can go back or access it and, and hear a little bit about it. I thought it would also be a good idea if we did, like you said, monthly updates, uh say from the, uh the chair or from one of the commissioners and gave an update on what's going on. And possibly, um. The, and most residents don't attend the meetings, as we all know, and not everybody watches them. But if it's posted, then the people, then the community at large can be kept abreast of what's going on. And perhaps promote more civic, uh, you know, activity, more civic uh movement, involvement and, and everything, input. We, you know, a lot of that really, I strongly believe that the more minds working on something, the more resources, the more we're going to move along. So it's just an informational thing. With COVID, I know a lot of cities are doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, feel free to reach out if you got questions, I'm happy to answer them on email. So if you want to send them to RWNG at Cupertino.org, happy to do so.
You can, so I know some of you need to go. So that's actually one of the topic uh we discussed in the subcommittee. Um, on the engagement, how do we get an update from commissioners out to even the other council members and the public? Because right now only the mayor attends a monthly meeting where he gets updates from all the commissions. But that, there is no minute from that meeting and that meeting is not uh public. So even the other four council members don't have any idea what's going on in each commission.
So Vice Mayor Chow, I think Tessa's point is very valid. And then uh the mayor's meeting, that was actually going to be my suggestion, if we could take minutes at the mayor's meeting. And um. Write them succinctly and then put it on the, on the, um, the newsletter that goes out from the city manager. I don't know if that is made public or not.
I think after we talked about in the subcommittee, we made a recommendation to the council, which they adopted. So that recommendation, I remember, um, we were initially thought we would like written update from each commission so that the, the mayor can collect. But then, then there were the question of who is supposed to write the update? Does the, the entire commission have to adopt this such update, then it becomes cumbersome. So, um, so there, I, I don't remember whether we eventually decide. However, we are updating the commissioner handbook now. So this is a good time to um bring this up and see if we can have a better um process. And then another thing I'm thinking is, okay, maybe we can do these video updates. On like, initially I thought, uh maybe every health and year, we can do a video updates from each commission. Then you can talk about what people have done in the past year. I assume people don't have time to attend a meeting every month or even after three months.
Vice Mayor Chow, a very quick point, do we have access to the Cupertino career? Because that reaches all the citizens in Cupertino. So if we do have access to that and if we could give a little bit of a synopsis of what's going on with the different commissions to update the public, that might be a good vehicle to get the point.
Good idea, we have Cupertino Sync, which is the city's newsletter. And it does go to all the residents and there is an online version. Right now, not everyone gets Cupertino career, I think they have budget cut. I heard that they are only sending to a portion of the addresses um at different time. So some people get.
I have a work meeting, so I have to do some drop off now. Uh just thanks, uh nice to meet all of you and thanks for joining us. And thank you, Leanna, for organizing this, I think we should do more of these and get the community more involved.
Great, yeah.
Thank you, sorry, I have to drop off.
Okay, thank you.
You have to go.
Sue has to go, you said that, bye Sue, take care.
Bye.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays, yes.
Happy holidays, yeah. Here you can find our contact information. In the third meeting, we will talk to commissioners from the Fine Art Commission and the Bike and Pedestrian Commission. Join us, see you then.